In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill.
Here. Commissioners, we have one member absent from tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to excuse her? Commissioner Bonzel.
I move that we excuse Mayor Jenna Smith. She's on maternity leave.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
I motion to second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. We have several announce-- excuse me. First, we have approval of the agenda. We do have an agenda in front of us, but before we approve this agenda, I do-- I'm going to need to remove one item because of the new restrictions due to the coronavirus. We are postponing item number three, the presentation on the life-saving efforts. We look very much forward to honoring the folks who have provided such an important contribution to us and our community, and the Chief of Police will be back to make that award at a future meeting. Commissioner Bonzel.
I would move that we add an item to new business for discussion of the city's coronavirus response.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
I second.
Discussion?
Second the motion, yes.
Yeah, sorry, discussion.
Discussion. No further discussion.
Okay. So clerks, do note that we will add an item. Is that now going to be nine? Yeah, that'll be item number nine, that we'll discuss our coronavirus response.
Your Honor, I have an item to add to the agenda, and that would be concerning Commissioner Lawrence's letter of resignation.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. So we now also have an item number 10, which will be on the discussion of an announcement of resignation, to receive and accept the resignation letter. Okay. And then finally, in announcements, we are going to be running the meeting today differently. I just wanted to review that with folks. Let me find our notice. Sorry, it's here on the Internet somewhere. For tonight's meeting. I lost my Internet. Here we are. "We are physically closing this meeting to the public in order to comply with social distancing requirements recently established throughout the state of Michigan. The meeting is being broadcast live on Charter Cable, Channel 191, and is streamed live online at It is possible to call into the meeting. There is a number that is available. We currently have the phone line open. There is no one on the phone at this time. It is a conference call, so people are invited to call in and can participate in the public comment period as well as listen to the entire meeting by phone. In addition, residents may submit public comments, which will then be read into the record. All public comments can be submitted digitally through email to shobins@marquettemi.gov. All comments submitted will be read into the public record during the meeting's normal public comment period. Written comments must be submitted no later than 5:45 p.m. And as always, when submitting a public comment, please include your first and last name and your full address. Please limit submissions to 500 words or less, as the three-minute speaking time limit will still be in effect when you speak on the phone. Information on how to do this was released as a public service announcement today, and we can-- and we will advise this and revise this as needed going forward according to whatever the state continues to do to keep our public health safe. That's announcements. We will now move on to agenda items. Our first agenda item is appointments. Commissioner Schlegel.
Is this going to be read at all, or just as is clerk? Do we normally read the appointments? I don't remember. Okay. The full description. All right. Madam Mayor, Protem, I would like to make the motion to appoint Callie New to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to Alex Tizio to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, to Sarah Bixby to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Michael Dunn to the Planning Commission, as presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to thank the people for putting so much effort into serving on these advisory boards. They are insanely important to our community and to the work that we are able to accomplish every day, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Frazier? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please vote yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Item number two, we have two reappointments on our agenda this evening. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel.
Your Honor, I motion to reappoint Jay Matt Tushini to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending 02-01-23, and Jeremy Otaway to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending 02-15-23.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Let's second the motion.
Discussion?
Again, just glad that these folks are willing to serve.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. We've now reached the public comment portion of the meeting. As far as I can tell on the technology, we don't have anyone on the phone at this time, so... The music is going. Here's some-- I think it's Mozart playing for us here. At least we have nice muzak on our city system. It's also available, as folks can see on the screen, the call-in number is available. There will be a second comment period, so if folks are watching at home or online, please feel free to use the call-in, and you could speak during the second comment period. All right, public comment is now closed. We are now at item number four, the presentation on the Investment Advisory Board by Chief Financial Officer Gary Simpson.
Hello. I'm not sure if this is the most ill-timed presentation or the most perfectly timed presentation. So this is regarding the annual report from the Investment Advisory Board. The board was established in 1980 by the City Commission, and we have a prime directive of the city's public funds are invested in a manner which will provide the highest investment return with maximum security while meeting the city's daily cash flow demands in conformance with all state statutes and local ordinances governing the investment of public funds. Some of our accomplishments. Let me get caught up on the slides here. Accomplishments during the last year, we continue to retain a low fiscal indicator score, which in this case is very good. We're often considered a top-10 financial community in the state, which, for our demographics, is excellent. Marquette's also very well-respected nationally, I do know that. We also just received, for the 33rd year in a row, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting, so people can be assured that the results we are spitting out are fair and accurate. And as I previously reported, our most current investment yield is .96 percent. Compared to a year ago, it was 1.18 percent, but there's really nothing we can do about that at the present time. So that includes the exciting presentation. Again, you missed the important part. We need three new board members, so if anybody's listening, please apply. All you need is a heartbeat, and we'll be happy on some. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Gary. So I really appreciate that our money is safe. There's one thing that I've looked up recently, and it was about socially responsible investments, and there's something called like a B-rating for investment companies and CDs, where we're not only insured that our money is safe, but that it's not being invested in predatory home lending, in things like fossil fuels, for instance. And I know that if we were-- I looked at who we invest with, and if we were investing in some of those same companies 10 years ago, we would have actually inadvertently probably contributed to the financial crisis of home lending. I know we have restrictions for what the city can do as far as what we're allowed to invest in. Do you know of any way that the city of Marquette can invest in this new movement of socially responsible or ethical investing?
Yeah, about the best thing we could do, and we have to be very careful. A lot of that you see in mutual fund-type investments, and we're very restricted as to what we can invest in. It's usually anything federal, state, or local, and, you know, bonds, notes, that kind of a thing. We can invest in CDs, and we can't really control what the bank does with that money, but they do promises. You know, they use that money to provide mortgages and that kind of a thing. So we're very restricted as to what we can invest in. You know, I wish I could say we could invest in toilet paper and Purell, because that's a big proportion, but we just can't do that. So we're...
But I've done the research behind who we're investing with, and I think, I mean, Wells Fargo-Wachovia has made significant reforms in how they are investing their money. They appear to have a really good track record of environmental investing, renewable energy, so I just want to make sure that going forward, the city is cognizant of where our money goes, because it just doesn't go to that investment. It's invested in other things, and a lot of those lucrative things can be societally dangerous. So, thank you for your presentation.
Well noted. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you. Yeah, Gary, thank you so much for your presentation, and also for all the important work that you do. You know, I think that the various awards and recognitions and our reputation statewide and across the country that are noted in the presentation really show the great work that you do, so really appreciate it. I was curious how-- if you have an idea of how heavily invested the city is in municipal bonds, and how risky you think municipal bonds are as an investment?
We currently don't hold any municipal bonds. We're allowed to, but I would say the only safe ones to invest in are from the city of Marquette, so that's...
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And the only other question I had, and this is really more out of curiosity, as somebody who's not an economist or a financial expert, what would incentivize-- because I know we've seen negative interest rates in some European countries, for example. What would incentivize somebody to buy bonds that have a negative yield?
It's mind-boggling to me, and I've asked that question too, but it's really called a flight to safety. For those who don't know, if you're buying an investment with a negative interest rate, you're basically paying them to hold on to your money. You'd actually be better off just taking the money and stuffing it under your mattress or something, so a word to my neighbors, if you're listening, please do not check under my mattress. But really, that's all it is. It doesn't make-- you might see your big institutional investors do it, because they have a lot more resources, and maybe it doesn't hurt them as much to do that, but for your individual investors, it makes no sense to do that.
Great. Well, thanks. I'm glad we're not just going out and buying lottery tickets, so. Appreciate it. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I'll echo, thank you, Gary, for the hard work in managing these challenging times, making sure that our money is absolutely safe and secure is paramount. And I hope that next year, there'll be a full suite of board members that will welcome-- walk in with you, who will be here with us. So folks, this is a really important committee that oversees literally our finances, so it would be a great one for folks who are-- who want to make sure that we keep on this fiscally prudent path. It'd be a great opportunity to get involved, so I encourage anyone to apply who's interested in those things. All right. Seeing no further questions? Thank you. All set. How are folks doing on the phone? Can you hear me okay? Let's see. Can you hear me on the phone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any-- Jackie, can you hear us? Maybe she's-- hmm. She went to watch it on TV, I think. So, thank you for-- so we do have a couple people on the phone now, but we are moving in. The next item on the agenda, number five, is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse.
Your Honor, I motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. An unfinished business, item number six, the Hurley Playground renovation and grant acceptance. Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you. Background, the Recreation Master Plan lists renovating Hurley Field Playground to protect users as a high priority. This winter, Sally Davis organized a fundraising campaign to renovate the playground. The city of Marquette has been awarded $15,800 through the three local Rotary Clubs. In addition, the Shyrus Institute has awarded the city with a $6,675 grant for the project. These funds, as well as a $250 personal donation, bring the total funds available for the project to $22,725. Staff solicited three quotes for similar playground equipment, and it was determined the equipment from Play World Midstates was the best value at $21,855. The children of the neighborhood were also consulted and are very excited about this selection. The swing set offers two accessible seats, one for ages two to five, and one for ages five to 12. The composite structure includes a transfer station, making the equipment accessible to all. Excuse me. City Facilities Department will install the equipment and purchase safety netting to protect the playground from the ball field. The Market Board of Light and Power has agreed to donate and install two poles and the netting. While this is a much-needed project, it was not planned for this fiscal year. A budget adjustment will be required to accept the funds and purchase the equipment. Fiscal effect, the city will receive $22,725 in revenue, and will spend this amount to purchase and install this equipment. The amount was not budgeted for, and a budget adjustment will be needed. Recommendation: amend the Community Services Administration budget to include $22,725 in revenue and expense, accept the Shyrus Institute and Rotary Grants, and authorize the purchase of Play World Midstates equipment in the amount of $21,855. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel.
I move that we amend the Community Services Administration budget to include $22,725 in revenue and expense, accept the Shyrus Institute and Rotary Club grants, and authorize the purchase of the Play World Midstates equipment in the amount of $21,855.
Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Discussion?
I think this is a wonderful project and a wonderful thing for the community. It's a great example of private, you know, nonprofit sector and the city coming together to do something great. When I was knocking doors in South Marquette when I was running for City Commission, people would talk to me all the time about Hurley Field and the playground, and how it's such a shame, it's in such bad shape, and now we're making some progress in fixing things up, you know, thanks to our Parks and Rec staff and to the generosity of these organizations. So, thank you to the Rotary Clubs and the Shyrus Institute and Sally for-- Sally Davis for raising this money, and I think it's especially cool that they consulted the kids in the neighborhood. I think that if we all just went around and asked all the kids in our neighborhoods what they'd like to see in the community, what changes they'd like to see in their neighborhood, it would provide a pretty clear picture of the areas we need to improve as a community. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Frazier.
Another great example of the community coming together for our new playground. I think it's great. Again, I like the fact that it included some inclusive stuff for handicapped, accessible kids. I think that's great. When I was back in my PAC days, we worked on the Prescott Park Playground, which got moved to Lower Harbor. Still waiting on funding for that, but hopefully it'll be a great playground to get built next year.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, my daughter was in so much with us at our place there on the corner of Ultimont and Hampton for 10 years, and between Giant's Foot and this park, we did not have one, what I would call satisfactory piece of playground equipment in South Marquette. So this is really exciting. I really am very grateful to Sally Davis and the Rotary Clubs for their contribution, for Shyrus, Board of Light and Power, everybody that's teaming up to make this a great push to bring a much-needed facility to South Marquette. Good, great news. You know, these are the types of things that we need to celebrate and every time that we come across our table and give those people that are doing the hard work to find that money and to recognize them and say thank you. So, just good stuff all the way around.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
I think it's a good opportunity to realize, again, that things don't happen unless somebody makes it happen. And while Rotary as a whole, and certainly the Shyrus Institute, have done great work over many years and will, I'm sure, continue to do so, it really was the spark plug, I think, of Sally Davis that said, "We're going to do it," and Sally was the one that made it happen. And that remarkable piece of leadership will certainly be with this city for many years to come. So I want to make sure that we have acknowledgement as how these type of projects happen, never on their own, but because somebody said, "I will make it happen." So, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, motion carries six-zero. We have several orders of new business tonight. First, number seven, the proclamation on Spread Goodness Day. Could the clerk please read the proclamation?
Thank you. Whereas the idea of Spread Goodness Day was first created in 2017 to inspire a global day of simple goodness by encouraging individuals, schools, and organizations to show the explosive power that one act of goodness multiplied by hundreds, thousands, and maybe millions has to change the world every single day, and whereas in 2017, the launch was created as a global goodness day initiative headquartered and centered around Marquette, Michigan, and whereas the people of Marquette rose up to create impactful Spread Goodness Day events and initiatives, a day that individuals, businesses, and schools committed to doing one good thing, celebrating goodness explosively together, and a day that proves that one action can change the world, and whereas the local public schools from elementary to Northern Michigan University participate in unique Spread Goodness Day events throughout the community, to create an explosive atmosphere and empowerment worldwide that the simplest acts of goodness change the world every day, and to spread goodness plain and simple, and to encourage-- to engage schools and student organizations worldwide, and to support grassroots nonprofits that help people survive with goodness through sponsoring the fundraising events, and whereas local citizen Anna Dravlin founded the nonprofit event after experiencing the positive effects of engagement with her community, volunteerism, and social action, and whereas despite suffering a massive stroke just after the launch of-- and whereas despite suffering a massive stroke just after launching the platform, she has kept the initiative alive through, excuse me, of goodness sparked in Marquette and spread throughout the world, and whereas the resolution states that Spread Goodness Day events started in our community and spread to 14 states and at least 10 countries, and whereas on the second Friday of March, we should honor the power and simplicity of goodness to change the world and positively impact our community. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer Hill, Mayor Protem of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the second Friday of March as Spread Goodness Day in the city of Marquette, Michigan, to uplift our community and inspire the world with acts of goodness, dated the 16th day of March 2020.
Do we need a motion? No, no, just, just reading the proclamation, okay, okay. And then we have item number eight. If the clerk could read the background on this grant for the very important census.
Thank you. Background, recently, staff was informed that the city was eligible for $10,000 through the Michigan Municipal League for the Be Counted 2020 Census Campaign. These funds are being made available to communities with hard-to-count populations and are part of a state effort to increase responses to the 2020 census. Grow and Lead Community and Youth Development, GLCYD, a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit, is already engaging in significant efforts towards the census and has developed an action plan and budget to make use of these funds in conjunction with city staff. The city will be applying to the MML on their behalf and will act as a pass-through for the funds if awarded. In consideration of the city agreeing to act as a pass-through, GLCYD agrees to dedicate any funds received in this effort to the purposes set forth in the attached agreement prepared by the city attorney. Fiscal effect, no direct cost to the city. Recommendation, approve the request to act as a fiscal intermediary for MML Be Counted 2020 Census Campaign funding of $10,000 for Grow and Lead Community and Youth Development. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I would motion to approve the request to act as a fiscal intermediary for the MML Be Counted 2020 Census Campaign funding of $10,000 for Grow and Lead Community and Youth Development.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Discussion?
Only discussion being, it's a great opportunity to use other people's money on something that we really all will benefit from.
Commissioner Frazier?
Great for MML to stand up and help our youth.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I think this is an incredible opportunity to recognize that there are some marginalized groups in Marquette who are very difficult to count, our low-income residents especially, our minority groups. I know we're working a lot with, or have been approached by MML at the Center for Native American Studies to make sure that adequate representation in the census is, that's definitely important to our community, so I appreciate this initiative absolutely.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, I'm gonna jump on back into that comment there because if you check your mail, at least our household did receive the pamphlet, and we did sit down as a family and call in and register the census online. Just to, you know, look for it in your mail if you haven't seen it come through yet because it's just, it's so important that we all register and that this gets done properly so that everybody is counted, not just, not just, you know, a few people for whatever reason it might be, but there's lots of, lots of opportunities and make sure that you're looking for those. It's a proud moment at our place, I guess, just to be a part of it, so thank you.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. And now we have a new, the new item on the agenda, the city's response to the coronavirus situation. So, I think I'll go ahead and, we, this is, as so many things have happened just in the last 48 hours, and although I know we had started these discussions more than a month ago, and many folks in our community have been asked, are being asked to sacrifice right now in very significant ways, it is for our public health and for all of us, and each of us can play a very important role in making sure that we stay safe and deal with this, what has been officially called now a pandemic. I would like to turn it over to the city manager, maybe say a few words about city operations and things that are coming for the city.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Basically, we are striving to maintain our services like we normally do. We are not planning at this point any disruptions, however, we were, we are trying to accommodate the concern involving or surrounding the coronavirus. For example, our buildings, our city hall will still remain open to the public, however, we are encouraging people to pay either through the drop box, it's located on Berg Avenue here in our, in our upper parking lot, or to pay their bills via electronic means. We will take, at this point, walk-ins, but interaction with staff will be limited through different protections and windows and things of that nature. The Lakeview Arena will be closed to the public, however, staff will be working to maintain city services in that area, so you still can contact them via telephone or online. Our water and sewer plants will continue to function as they normally do and staffed like they normally are, however, not that anybody visits them very much, but public access will be, will be limited as well. Our emergency services, our first responders, will be maintaining their current high level of service. Fire department, which is a little bit more likely to be exposed to outside, is it contagions? Will be at a little higher level of alert and protection than we have been. Police department, the same way. Public Works will continue to function, however, access to the Public Works building will be limited. We still will accept people walking in, however, they will not be allowed beyond the front lobby. We are doing everything within our power to maintain the services that we, people have come to enjoy and expect from us, however, we are in constant contact in, with all the responsible parties with the pandemic, and are doing everything in line with protecting the public and our employees as well. So, rest assured, we will maintain our services. If any changes, we will certainly let people know, but that's the level we would like to operate right now, and we also, I mean, obviously, we ask for public participation as well, so feel free to contact my office if you have any questions. Certainly, we'll address any concerns, and if there's something that comes up that's maybe we hadn't thought about, we'd be happy to address it. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanzel?
Thank you. I, I guess I initially, to start, I have a question, you know, I guess for the city manager, but also for my colleagues, which is that, do we think that it would be prudent to have an emergency meeting of the city commission dedicated specifically to various options that the city could pursue for responding to the coronavirus crisis, as well as the recent, the impacts of the recent emergency measures enacted by the state of Michigan? I guess I would say first the city manager, but I'm curious of my colleagues.
You said me first. Personally, I don't think you need to have an emergency meeting at the moment. I'm sharing everything with you that we've been doing. I think you, you are reading everything that we have. I will have another document for you tomorrow in a little bit more detail as to what measures staff are taking specifically to expand or expound a little bit further on what I said a moment ago. You know, we are looking at the intricacies of how we handle personnel related to this situation and their need to stay home or to be somewhere else besides here. Certainly, we are taking everything into consideration and erring on the side of caution and certainly looking out for our employees before all else. Each one of the staff, each one of the departments, which we have nine, have submitted a list of changes or different actions that they will be taking moving forward. It's a several-page document, however, it's somewhat detailed, and I'd like to share that with you tomorrow, which will give you a better idea of how we were responding. I don't think it's necessarily meant for the public in that there's no secrets in it, it's just kind of boring and kind of just, here's what we're gonna do here, here, and here, and certainly anything that we do that affects the public in general or at a greater level than what we're doing now, I would, I would say a special meeting might be appropriate, but there's just nothing more I can add to the discussion that you haven't already received.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. You want my opinion? All right. You know, I'd have to agree, I guess, at this point with the city manager. I'm glad you brought it up, it's definitely something that, you know, obviously is the buzz around town. The, I've had a number of friends or community members approach being asked, you know, what, what do you, you know, is there anything I can do? And my response is, you know, pay attention to the news, listen to what the governor's doing, follow the leads, I'm hoping to hear a little bit more, or maybe I'm, I'm not, I don't know how the county health department is kind of injecting anything, whether there's any, anything new, or they're just following along with, with what the governor's mandated, but I guess I would look to hear a little bit more from that entity. I know that, you know, Duke Life Point, Marquette General Health here has got their place pretty much on lockdown and are really doing a good job of trying to limit interactions and make sure that patients' care comes first, and so, you know, respect, respect all those wishes that are, have been put in place. And I guess I would challenge all of us to check on your neighbors. You know, reach out, talk to your friends, your neighbors, some of the elderly, whatever it takes, just to make sure that they've got enough, and if you can, share a, share a roll of toilet paper with them, then that would be much appreciated, I'm sure, but the big thing is that, you know, we have to, we have to look out for each other. Time and time again, when we talk about the UP and the people that we are, it's that we have to be Upers taking care of ourselves, Uppers taking care of Uppers, and this is one of those instances, and share with your neighbors, consider giving to a food pantry if you can, other, other groups that are, that are doling out food or necessary items, really encourage you, if you have a little bit extra, give it. Give as much as you can till it hurts because everybody here in our community needs to, to, you know, make it through this, and we're gonna do it. So, that's my, my two cents on it. I guess if I would ask for anything, plain and simple, I'd say I'd like to hear a little bit more from the county, and if there's, you know, certain types of actions that they're gonna be taking, and I realize everything changes so quickly, so I'd like to hear a little bit more from them, and I would also encourage, Mike, if it's possible, for the city to, to post these things, as boring as they may be, if we can get something online, if it's relative, relatively important, then I think that we should at least have something that they can go to and, you know, here's, here's some of our information, whether or not it's gonna satisfy their itch or not, but, you know, if it's still possible, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I, I do think it would be prudent to have an emergency meeting. I really appreciated your post today on Facebook about not only the health impacts of what this does to our community, but also the financial burdens that people are facing when out of work. You know, when you're in a salary position and you have accommodations, this can be relatively comfortable to stay in and watch Netflix all day or be quarantined, but we have wage workers in the city who, I'm one of them, and the financial impacts on, especially our low-income people, is pretty extensive, and I received some information from a citizen today about just a parking ticket that he can't pay for. His, his wife has respiratory issues, and he, you know, tried to plead his case, and I think, you know, it's, it's just systemic that we have people pay their parking tickets, and so I would be curious what this city can do to alleviate any financial burdens that are a consequence of, of being at home.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would certainly be in favor of any emergency meeting when we think it necessary, but we also have to understand there's, there's roles and missions that are involved here in what cities do and what counties do and what states do, and how we fit into that concept. And at the city level, we don't really, what am I, how am I trying to word this? It starts with the president, it rolls to the state, it rolls to the county, and it ends up with the city of Marquette in terms of direction that we're expecting, support that we're expecting, and for example, we may well be getting reimbursement, those folks that are not drawing a salary now may well be getting reimbursement, at least as you read some of the acts in Congress, so it becomes a constantly moving stream of information and changes in mid, mid-current, so to speak. This afternoon at 3:00, I think, listening to the ELC press conference from DC, they were talking that now you should not be congregating in groups larger than 10, and that's in direct contravention to what the governor had said this morning. I'm not blaming the governor, I'm saying that the target is moving very rapidly. We also need to realize that the role of the city commission is broadly speaking to make and approve policy. It is not to put our fingers in the pie and tell people what to do and how to do it. We make policy, we hire experts to run the city, and they are the people who make that, those, if you will, smaller-level decisions that actually make things happen. So, I have the greatest confidence of what we have in city staff now as we move forward. If we come to those situations where it's necessary that we look at something beyond their ability to manage it, then we need to get together and we need to figure that out. But at the moment, I'm comfortable with where the city is going and what the city is doing. That said, we can always make a suggestion, and my suggestion might be on our, the front of our, of our website page, we have one corner dedicated to the coronavirus. That simply is a hot button hit every day of something new that's occurring or something citizens should be more aware of. I'm really glad to see the pushes coming out of Facebook, think we should continue to do that, but again, those are initiative items that are really happening without the city commission's involvement. So, if it's necessary, absolutely, we get together, we do it, but we need to have a purpose in mind to do so. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
Sure, I had one other question, and first, I just want to thank everybody for their input. I generally agree with what I think the consensus is here, you know, and I also, I also think that, you know, it's important for us as commissioners to be providing sort of suggestions and, and the feedback that we're receiving from the community, but ultimately, we do need to trust those professionals that are in positions of leadership here in the city, and I have full confidence in our leadership, and I was curious, I know that there are other municipalities that have been suspending, temporarily suspending shut-off notices and shut-offs for utilities, for municipal utilities in the United States and here in the state of Michigan, and it's my understanding that as of today, we are not going to be shutting off people's water. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, and we're not going to be assessing any late fees.
Good, thank you, and, and I'm just, I guess, as far, as long as we're talking about suggestions, I want to echo the suggestions of Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Stonehouse about getting more information out on the city website and out on social media, and also, you know, perhaps as we move forward, and I'll maybe mention some you know, perhaps as we move forward, and I'll maybe mention some of this in commission, commissioner comment later, but that we might consider turning water back on for people who are currently, any occupied, you know, buildings that are currently under a, you know, where a shut, where a shut-off for water services is in effect, and that we also might do some more research, as I think, as I think we're already doing, into what the city could do to ease this financial burden that Commissioner Lawrence is talking about. Certainly the, the actions that we're already taking with regards to utilities and utility shut-offs is part of that, the actions we're already taking to review our city employees' leave policies is part of that. But I also think that we need to be thinking about housing. At the end of the day, we can't expect people to stay home if they're not going to be able to afford to have a home, if they're, they're missing wages and they're laid off or having hours cut. So I would encourage the city to be looking into some options that other municipalities are already exploring in parts of the state and this country with regards to limitations on evictions for non-payment of rent, as well as limitations on foreclosures, at the very least for residential properties. So I really appreciate the input, and that's all I have to say.
I have a couple of things I want to add. Thank you for that conversation at this very important time. And I know the city staff spent several hours today meeting and working on getting that response, and I look forward to seeing the report and the further evolution of this as we figure out what's going to be the best routes going forward. I myself spoke to about 10 different people, I think, this, today, been on the phone, actually talking to people, which was great, today. And one of the things I learned is that several of our warm, food banks and places of food distribution actually rely on the restaurants and NMU food recovery programs for as sources of food. And now that we have this major change with the bars and restaurants moving to only take-out and delivery, it may, there may be an additional need, and I just wanted to highlight that here today. But what, keep watch, again, this is, everyone's heard, but it's moving very quickly, but that was a need that was identified for me today as a possible, something that folks, if you're looking for something to do, the warming center, Room at the End, Salvation Army's Food Pantry, probably others, forgive, forgive me for not naming them all right now. But you can call 211 in Michigan to learn about available services. That's also been said by the governor and others as a, as a source of information. And, um, let's see, did I hit my list? Yeah, and as was said, the, the health information is primarily through, from the county and then the state, and staying on top of that, and I know I've been using Facebook as a way to communicate and Instagram, and the city does have a Facebook account as well for official city business, and that can be another place, but primarily you want to go to michigan.gov/coronavirus, which is the beer with virus at the end, but remember the beer is fine. Seeing no, any further comments, I think we're good for now. But yes, we will all strive to protect our community. This is a very important, significant public health threat. And what, I will close by saying that what I was told by a local doctor is, what's going to happen in our rural community is it's, it will be here, but it's going to be here a little later. So while we aren't, why are we doing this all now? Just like there was that run on the grocery stores, we don't want there to be a run on ICU and ventilator equipment. We want to smooth that out and try to reduce transmission as much as possible. So thank you again for everyone's, people are making significant sacrifices at this time, and we greatly appreciate them. Moving on to our new item 10, I'm realizing I'm not sure, have the clerk read?
I think the city attorney might have.
Oh, the city attorney regarding the resignation.
I just have one comment on that, and that is that you need to be mindful of it, of when you accept that resignation because that triggers the 60-day requirement of appointing a new commissioner, and if you want that 60 days to start now, act now, if you want to buy yourself a little time, given the current circumstances of the public health and the community and the state and the nation, maybe you want to acknowledge it tonight, but not accept it until the next meeting.
Okay. I, so that would, I, recognizing that we're going to have a change in the membership of the commission, it's going to start this evening, and then we will have a process of reappointment, or I should say of appointment, where we will be accepting applications for that person. And the decision has been made that the process for selecting the next person will happen at the next commission meeting when Mayor Smith will have returned. So we will, we can acknowledge, for, on a legal basis, I'm hearing, we need to acknowledge the resignation and understand that the process for determining how that seat will be filled will be fully laid out at the March 30th meeting.
Question. Thank you. So if I'd like to be very clear here, number one, I want to honor Commissioner Lawrence's wish in a, in a way that is timely, and I just want to make sure, so are we saying that we should not make a motion if we don't want the 60-day to start now, but his resignation would not be?
What I would do if you don't want the 60 days to start today is I would acknowledge that you've received the correspondence of the intent to resign and take no further action beyond that.
Okay. With that being said, though, I think, what's your wish, Andrew? I mean, I want to respect that more than, than the 60 days, quite honestly.
I think if you acknowledge it tonight, I, please, and then wait for two weeks, don't expect me at any work sessions or anything.
Right, right, no, it will be in effect.
You know, it can be a lingering, I mean, I, I don't like that, but.
What do you want?
I would like it to be accepted tonight. I think that 60 days is, you know, when people apply for the appointment process, it is digital, it's something that doesn't require a lot of interaction considering the pandemic. But I, I also, I, I want to leave that up to your judgment as well, because you're going to have to process this, and I'm regrettably not.
I would recommend that we accept the letter tonight and then act on it at the next meeting and assure Commissioner Lawrence that by all practical means, you'd be considered resigned. I mean, we will not include you in any further commission action. I think that the, the timeframe, given what's going on and the amount of time city staff is spending on other things, the extra two weeks would be very helpful for us to process this properly.
Respect that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I need a motion to receive and accept.
No, we just need to, we need to acknowledge.
Oh, sorry. We just decided to acknowledge, I beg your pardon. So I, I as.
Discuss that, or is that a decision that we made to acknowledge?
I guess, is there a further discussion?
I would suggest that we accept the resignation. 60 days is plenty of time, that's the same amount of time we had when we did previous situations where we had folks either leave for various reasons. So there's no arbitrary limit there. In other words, 60 days is what we've used before, you can use it now. And I, out of, out of all respect, I don't want to see Commissioner Lawrence hanging there, and he would just be hanging. And I think if the decision is made, we should honor that decision and get on with it instead of arbitrarily letting it hang. Now, I realize the manager would like more time, but the, the coronavirus is not going away, the situation is not going to change in the next 60 days, we know what we've got coming, and we're as well to deal with it now as we will be in 60 days. And I appreciate the attorney's viewpoint on, look, you can buy more time, and she did a good job advising us of that. But that's neither here nor there, based on what this commission may choose to do. I said my 10 cents.
I want to say that the mayor also has a voice here, and the mayor would like to be a part of making sure that the process is fully vetted. So this is both her and I saying that going forward, we want to move forward with the commission fully outfitted at that time. So I, I think there's, I think we can acknowledge and move forward and then have the process be determined at the next meeting, and everything can move forward. I think, I saw Commissioner Schlegel.
There were some hands up down there.
Sorry. Commissioner Frazier.
I agree, Mr. Stonehouse. I mean, I guess Andrew's best wish is, it's his decision to move on, we could get the process started. I know there's a lot of people already think about running for city commission, maybe in November, they can put their applications in, the city can take a look at it, but there, we have 60 days to process it. We've done this before, we've got a, a process we laid out for with replacing Ms. Kembesi, that's how we got Jonah Smith to, to our city council. And then when our dear friend, Mr. Baldini passed away, we had to fill his spot, and we assumed the same position, accepted the applications, went through the paperwork, and found somebody to replace him. So it's a process we've done before, and like Mr. Stonehouse said, we have 60 days to process it. So we have plenty, we should have enough time, I mean, the city's bogged down, a lot of stuff going on right now, so it won't happen right now, but we'll make an announcement at the next meeting saying, okay, here's how to, you know, submit your applications and so forth and so on, but let us move on with the process and respect Lawrence's wishes.
Commissioner Bunsen.
Yeah, I have a question. So, and I suppose whoever has the answer to it, please feel free to respond. I, I completely understand the desire to have more time and that we could buy ourselves more time by waiting until the next meeting to formally accept it or whatever. But I, I think we really need to respect Commissioner Lawrence's wishes, and also I think that arguably, I mean, it's, I think Commissioner Stonehouse put it much better than I can. I think that he made some strong arguments that it's also in the best interest of the city to move forward. However, my question is, I, I agree that we want to have Mayor Smith involved in this process from the start, but what is to stop us from accepting the letter tonight and then just beginning that process at our next meeting on March 30th and not doing anything else tonight? I mean, I suppose the, the mayor could still be part of that conversation, then drive it from the beginning.
It, it kind of depends on what you ultimately do tonight, but if you accept, formally accept the resignation by charter, you have 60 days to find a replacement.
I understand.
Sorry, I don't think my mic was on, so.
Oh.
Sorry about that. So what I said was, if you formally accept the resignation tonight, then you by the, by the charter have 60 days to find a replacement. If you do not formally accept it, when you do formally accept it, that's when that 60 day starts.
I, I understand. I guess what I was asking is, you know, why do we need to, to wait, given that, I think it's a good point, 60 days is a long time, and we've done it in far less than that in the past.
Okay. Commissioner Lawrence.
I do think that the mayor should be a part of the, the official conversation, but, you know, given her maternity leave, I have been in close contact with the mayor for the past several days, and my letter is to her, it is addressed to her, for all intents and purposes that I know, she supports my decision, she understands it, and I don't know if that's important to the conversation, but.
Okay.
We are also in this unique circumstances where people who have the intent to run in November have already, you know, made up their mind on that, so we do have interest within that 60-day period that, it's up to you guys.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I feel like I might have let this drag. I, do you want to, I, I, I think so the, the question is what, it seems like the question on the table is, if we accept it, then it's 60 days, it's, 60 days from today is May 15th, I looked it up. I think that's plenty of time to make, get through the process, and in the last two instances, it was done in four weeks and five weeks. So this is longer than both of those time periods. So I am comfortable with accepting the resignation, that is Commissioner Lawrence's wishes, and it does mean that we have until May 15th, which should be plenty of time. It just means we aren't announcing the process tonight, but we'll announce the process at our next meeting on March 30th.
So with, with that being said, thank you, I'd make the motion to recognize and accept the letter of resignation for Commissioner Lawrence. Knowing that we, the start point for the 60-day process to replace him will commence immediately following. Okay, thank you.
Second, Commissioner Bunsen.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Good luck. Best of luck to you. I hope that your, your, your path is straight and that you find where you, where you want to go.
Commissioner Bunsen.
Yeah, I would just echo those sentiments and just say that it's been, you know, I know you noted in your letter, it's been an honor to serve on the commission, but it's been an honor to serve with you. So thank you, and I'm sure you'll continue giving back to our community.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
I wish you all luck in the world, and I think that you certainly will be able to move forward and, and continue. One comment, though, Your Honor, we do have the opportunity to establish a work session. If the commission wants to sit down and come up with a plan that we would use to replace, and then in turn be in a position to announce that already made up at our next commission meeting.
And I'm not comfortable doing that until the mayor's officially fully back with us.
Right. I mean, that would allow her to be fully involved in the entire process.
Not until March 30th is my understanding, but the commission city manager has a statement he'd like to.
I, I only make that as a comment.
My comment would be that we've been through this twice in the last few years, and we are fully prepared to begin the process. If you'd like me to explain, or if you're comfortable with the previous two processes, which were the same, I can explain that tonight. And I'd also like to point out that we still might be having meetings like this when that decision is made, and I think that needs to be a consideration that applicants may not be in the room at the time you make that decision. But if you'd like me to, I'll explain.
Yeah, just very high level. So this is not that what we will do, but what we could do based on previous practice.
Hang on, hang on.
What we have done in the past is we've made applications available online. Interested individuals will give them a two-week period to fill out the applications. Once those applications are received and the deadline is over with, we would then pass along those applications to the commissioners with the intent of scheduling one of the agenda items at a future meeting within that 60-day window. Once that meeting is scheduled, that agenda item is on the meeting, then the commission would go forth with selecting from that group who they want to replace the exiting commissioner. What we've done in the past is we've used the ballot form of, or ballot method of selecting the new commissioner. In other words, each commissioner, kind of like what you do with the mayor in the pro tem, you, we go back and forth or keep taking votes until someone gets a majority of votes. It seems to be a, a system that has worked well in the past. I really don't, can't think of any modifications you might want to do that, but certainly it's, it's something worth considering. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is move on and have final comments of the commissioner comments, because we do need to vote on the acceptance, and then we can have final statements at the, at the, in the. the, at the, in the comments. I think we understand that, maybe want to restate the motion that Commissioner Sligle made, please, just to review? Because we are going to need to vote on, I believe-
So the motion was to accept the letter from Commissioner Lawrence as his resignation, and start the sixty day process.
All in favor of the motion, please vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. The ayes, paves, it passes six zero. Thank you. We are now moved into the second public comment period. Is there anyone on, is there anyone on the phone?
Speak into them.
Yeah, maybe.
Hello, this is Margaret Brum. I'm on the phone.
We can hear you, Margaret. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Margaret Brum. I'm on the phone. We can hear you, Margaret. Go ahead. Good evening, this is Margaret Brum.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
Margaret, go ahead. Good evening, this is Margaret Brum. I'm at 404 East Magnetic Street. Good evening, this is Margaret Brum. I'm at 404 East Magnetic Street.
You need to turn your TV off, Margaret, please.
I'm at 404 East Magnetic Street.
Margaret, could you please turn off your TV, because it's echoing back into the room? There, much better. I'm going to put you back on speaker. Thank you. Go ahead.
Apologies, this is new to me.
Yes, new to all of us. Thank you very much. We can hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that the sound went off when Gary Simpson was talking financials, and I had to call in to get the sound back on my TV. So my apologies, I have been quieter longer. I wanted to make a point of saying that the resolution for the Hurley Field Playground Equipment congratulating Sally Davis and the Rotarians is a tremendous example of a community coming together to take care of the children and provide the playground equipment that everybody needs. And that I felt bad for Sally all during the campaign last year, when she was working very hard to be elected. She was also working very hard to get these children, this playground, and I shared with her her excitement when she sat down with John and actually ordered equipment, and I note, I read all the details, that this playground will have two accessible swings, and I wanted to congratulate her and say that I'm thrilled that the city is moving forward in South Marquette with a field for Hurley, with a playground for Hurley Field, because I remember it from a child, and it was a very good place to play. So that's my comment for the night. I wanted to just echo what the commission already said about Sally Davis. Thank you, and I'm very sorry about the problem with the TV.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there anyone else on the, on the telephone call? Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
We have an email.
Oh, we have an email. I'm sorry, we do have an email to be read. Thank you. Go ahead.
This is from Sally Davis, 1711 Grandview Drive. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Marquette, I want to thank the city for supporting the Hurley Field Playground project through adjustment of the budget and plans. It is important that everyone recognize the city's role and the role of the Board of Light and Power in making this happen, as it will take adjustment of resources. This project is about the power of rotary, the commitment of the community, and the passion of those who are connected to South Marquette and the ball field. It was South Marquette resident Lenny Distardins that sparked the idea, and when Rotary set out to raise funds for a new swing set, we had no idea that the project would become as large and significant as it has. The ice cream social we hosted in September saw many elementary students bring in change from their piggy banks. Parents added to the donation, parents added to the donation cans with twenty, fifty, and several one hundred dollar checks. One couple sent us one thousand dollars after the event. It was then that our club recognized us, that this was something bigger than a swing set. The two other Rotary Clubs in Marquette added to the fund. Then came the Reynolds Foundation. Through a grant from the Rotary Foundation, we doubled the pot of money. Donations kept trickling in. A bench was donated, and the Shyrus Foundation provided a very significant grant. But the best part of this project is the number of people who has, who have expressed gratitude and their interest in volunteering to do the physical work. Two young girls stopped me one day, asked if they could help. Emma, Charlotte, and their friend Rocky have been the advisors for John Swenson and I. They told us what they wanted, a new swing set, a slide, and something to climb on. They continually advised us on the equipment and had final say on what was proposed to you this evening for purchase. This project is showing these young people and their friends how things can be accomplished through community engagement. Thank you, commissioners and staff, for your part in this project and for allowing it to go forward. There are many communities, there are many in the community who will be celebrating the renewal of this playground.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for the patience as we figure out how to do this and work through telephone and email. Carrier pigeons could land on the top of the building, but I don't think we could let them in. But thank you, everyone, very much, and we will continue to welcome your comments at our meetings going forward. We now will have comments from the commission? Sure. Commissioner Lawrence is going to give the start off.
I obviously have a problem with brevity, so bear with me. So I regretfully have submitted my resignation as Commissioner of the City of Marquette. Over the past several weeks, my mental health has been severely impacted during inevitable divisions within our community. I am attuned to the gravity of my decision. This has been extraordinarily difficult for me and my family. I now must accept my emotional limitations and recognize that they have been exceeded. They are unlikely to improve with time as a public official, and I have been forced to reconsider the leadership role that I play in my beloved city. I know this may come as a shock to citizens. If I have let anyone down by rescinding my seat just six months into my term, please accept my most sincere apologies. I genuinely thought I could handle the consequences of speaking up for change in the community. Never did I think I would resign at the first significant sign of political and personal adversity. I too am incredibly disappointed in my inability to withstand it. My torment has been private, but it's real, it's torrential, and it's debilitating. I hope citizens agree that the circumstances were distinct and unpredictable. I am disheartened that the debate over our high school nickname became so personal and so divisive. I hope the Board of Education makes a decision for the betterment of our community, however they see fit. I stand by my position on the issue, but I do not wish any further fraction in Marquette because of my service. Although individuals have privately attempted to deteriorate my self-esteem and publicly vilified my reputation, I do not blame any dissension on any collective group or organized efforts to recall me. As I passionately do my best with the knowledge bestowed upon me, citizens are doing what they believe is best for a representative democracy. I humbly resign under my own accord, with the hope that it can somehow unify citizens. I wanted to serve my community and do big, good things for the love of Marquette. I took a very different approach than my predecessors, and although I firmly believe that there's a role for passionate activism in government, for me, it is no longer as a member of this commission. I do recognize that my methods of advocacy could have been more politically astute. I hope to have a long career advocating for political causes in a different capacity. For the foreseeable future amidst this significant cultural debate, I do not have the mental or the emotional fortitude to continue service. Maintaining my health must be a first priority. Spending the next year into a possible recall election, defending a non-city issue and myself, is not productive for my personal stability or the business of the City of Marquette. I extend my deep heartfelt appreciation and apologies to my strongest supporters and volunteers. I am eternally grateful for your support. Thank you for helping me accomplish what we have. You are the change. I take full responsibility for my leadership role in the Red Men Red Ed conversation. Although I vehemently maintain my position on the issue, it is apparent my office and title made my communication methods unconducive to positive public discourse. If I miscommunicated about this issue, my intentions were earnest. I had always told the truth as best as I knew it, and I value ethics and transparency. I admittedly made mistakes, as I am invariably imperfect. Consequently, my life and my family have been disturbed and distracted to the extent that I no longer feel that I can play a proficient role in my government. In addition, the distraction has taken a significant toll on my personal, academic, work, and home life. I do not wish to cast blame or entice further conflict with any group for my resignation. I understand and appreciate citizens' rights to hold their government officials accountable. I never envisioned things would escalate as they have, and I apologize for any role that I played in that. For however short, serving Marquette was truly the honor of my life. I was dedicated to being a great commissioner, but reaction to my passion for a solitary outside issue has taken precedence and would continue to take precedence over my ability to govern. I now must concentrate on being a better employee, a better student, a better fiance, and a better community advocate. If you voted for me, please understand I never intended to disappoint you. I wholeheartedly intended to serve two terms and push policy in which I fundamentally believe. I never anticipated anything like this. I have always understood my role on commission was to advocate for progressive values, and I'm not permanently retreating, but I'm confident that my former colleagues will fill my vacancy accordingly. The city is in good hands under the direction of Mayor Smith and Manager Angelie. I now need to focus exclusively on sustaining the well-being and stability of myself, for my family, and my future. Please, don't let my resignation further divide the community. I truly believe this is for the best. Let's use this as a teaching moment for both sides to start a new, more positive dialogue sans personal attacks. I appreciate privacy at this time, and I apologize for any confusion or chaos my resignation may bring to the functions of the city. I know Marquette will eventually survive these external and internal qualms, and we will all be better because the conversation took place. With profound gratitude, I'm humbly yours. Thank you.
I'll go next, sir, since Mayor Protem's out of the office. Congratulations, good speech, Andrew. As far as, you know, the virus thing going on, I don't think we can, we can have a meeting about that if we want, but I think the city manager's doing a good job running the city for things that the governor's telling us what to do, like, like they've said, it goes from the Trump to the government, to down to the governor, back, just spill on down, and we're no experts. I mean, we all read what we want online and take discussions, but we can't make any adjustments to say, okay, do this, do this, because we don't really have any power. So, I mean, we can say what we think is well, but we can't, you know, make any decisions. I don't think it's good for us to make decisions. I think it's up to the, our local, like, the governor, to pass things by. Our city manager did a good job and let things go, and we can't make recommendations, because that's up to the healthcare, but things gone, hopefully we get through with this. I know our students were a little shocked that happened at school Friday. We knew Monday was coming, but they were shocked on Friday. They had a fun day scuttled, but it didn't happen, so they're a little disappointed, but they're finding different ways to do it. My daughter's taking a bunch of online classes, that she does after-school activities, and she's found a way to take care of that stuff, and it's doing good for her. And just wanted to point out that, in her consent agenda, our local church museum got a lot of past due funding through Chippewa and the KBC, so thank you to KBC and the Chippewa for helping our church museum get better. Other than that, good job.
Commissioner Bunsen.
First, I just want to thank Commissioner Lawrence for his service to the City of Marquette. You know, as I mentioned before, it's been an honor to serve with you, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, the courage that you displayed in making the decisions that's best for you and for your family. I also want to, I want to thank the city manager and city staff for taking much-needed action to minimize the threat posed by coronavirus to our community. I think I speak for everyone in this room and in the City of Marquette when I say I'm grateful to have Mr. Angelie at the helm at this moment. And I also want to thank the many healthcare workers and first responders in our community who will be on the front lines of this ongoing public health crisis. As many people know, today Governor Whitmer placed major restrictions on the hospitality and service industry, and the CDC also recently issued guidance over the weekend discouraging any gatherings of more than fifty people for the next eight weeks, and I think as one of my colleagues noted, now that's down to ten people. While I strongly support these actions, they will have serious consequences for city residents, especially small business owners and service industry workers who often earn low wages. I'm also concerned that the paid leave measures implemented by the city may still be providing a significant incentive for sick employees to come to work, so I'm glad that we're making progress on that. I believe that we have a responsibility, as city leaders, to do what we can to contain the spread of the virus while supporting the most vulnerable members of our community. And at future meetings, and as the, as the city staff is working on this, I hope that we consider various measures, including restoring water service to all occupied buildings currently subject to a utility shut-off for non-payment, as many municipalities, including several here in Michigan have already done. Changing our paid leave policies temporarily to remove any financial or compensation-related incentives for sick employees to come into work. Allowing city employees to work from home, especially if they're in a high-risk population or have childcare needs due to the recent public school closures. As well as considering citywide moratorium or limitations on residential rental evictions for non-payment of rent, as many other municipalities around the country have done. And finally, doing anything that we can to minimize or postpone foreclosures, especially residential foreclosures, as some Michigan counties are already considering doing. These might seem like pretty extraordinary steps, especially for a local government to take, but according to the Census Bureau, take the census, by the way, according to the Census Bureau, data shows that one in eight Marquette workers are employed in the food prep and service industry. Thirty-seven percent of all city households and fifty-eight percent of renters are cost burden, which means they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And most small businesses in the city are very ill-equipped to deal with this crisis and to deal with the restrictions imposed by the state. Ninety-seven percent of small businesses earn less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in income per year, and one in four employees do not have paid sick leave. So this is clearly a major crisis for the city already. Even if there's not a single coronavirus case in the City of Marquette, thousands of city residents are going to be seriously negatively impacted by the important emergency steps that have already been taken. And we have a responsibility to help reduce the financial burden imposed on city residents who might get sick, have their hours cut, get laid off, or have their places of employment or their businesses temporarily closed or restrict hours. And I also would just conclude by urging our community partners to take similar emergency action if they have not already. In particular, I hope that affordable housing providers in the city follow the lead of organizations like the Lansing Housing Commission and the Capital Area Housing Partnership Downstate to postpone evictions and waive fees for late rent. And I also hope that the Marquette Board of Light and Power will follow the lead of Consumers Energy and DTE Energy, as well as for water utilities, the City of Marquette, in suspending electricity- in suspending electricity shut-offs for low-income customers. And finally, I just urge everyone in the community to, if at all possible, whenever possible, please stay at home. Do not go to work if you're, especially if you're feeling ill. And please don't go to the emergency room or the walking clinic if you're feeling sick as well, because you could be exposing people who are sick and immunocompromised to, to the virus. And also, please refrain from hoarding food, toiletries, medicine. That doesn't help anybody. And lastly, make sure, as Commissioner Schlegel noted earlier, to check in on your friends, your family members, your neighbors. Right now, we all need to band together and do what's right for the sake of our community and look out for one another. So, I really appreciate everybody that tuned in tonight, and if you have any concerns, please feel free to email me or give me a call, 906-236-0247. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Real quick, just going back again, look for your census cards in the mail. Get, get that taken care of. It literally takes five minutes, and it's a great, it's a great part of what we need to, to do to make sure that we're going to get all the funding that we possibly can as a community. I was really excited last Friday, I think was the first time I saw the city truck out filling some potholes. They are on it, and I'm going to, going to beat the, I'm going to beat that issue to death, I'm sure, in the months to come, but let it be known that they are already out there working to, to get things filled as necessary and keep us from having major infrastructure issues. So, thank you for the city staff for doing that and for moving forward. Again, I just want to stress at this time, you know, with, with everybody being out of work or however it is, be kind to your neighbor, help your neighbor out. If there's something that you can do, volunteer, but, you know, again, stay safe, and if you're, you know, the best thing you can do is just hunker down and, and keep, keep things from getting any worse than they, they need to be. So, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Couple of things, if I can, I'd like to again thank Commissioner Lorenzer for his service and to praise him for the courage of his decision, because I'm sure this was an extraordinarily difficult one, and it takes great, great strength of character to do so. So, thank you. I'm the history guy. In difficult times, I look back to the lessons of the past. And this virus leads directly to President Franklin Delano Roosevelt's first inaugural address in 1933 during the height of the Great Depression. Eleven thousand out of 20,000 banks across the country had closed. Think of everybody that lost their life savings, every nickel they had when that bank went down. Millions of people out of work. Agitators in the streets demanding the US turn communist like Russia. That was the situation. Does anybody remember the key phrase from Roosevelt's speech, the one that we still remember today? Quote, "All we have to fear is fear itself." And with it, he united the people of the United States to fight a war, not against a flesh and blood, a flesh and blood enemy, as we did after 9/11, but against the depression itself. And that depression was every bit as dangerous as the coronavirus is today. Americans were dying with a lack of food, from starvation, from poor medical care, the same things that arguably could be happening with Corona. But new heroes emerged, too. Millions of everyday Americans working in new federal programs like the Works Progress Administration, building new national infrastructure, including the dam at Hoover Dam, and roads and other facilities, thousands more replanting the forests in the Civilian Conservation Corps, and many more agencies that folks step forward to man than to make run. And heroes are emerging, emerging today, too. And to reach just down US 41 a little bit, in Nagani, the Jackson Pitt Restaurant is providing free lunches for all of the children from Nagani School System as they're out of, out of class. And Marquette Diggs Restaurant is building a food bank for those in need. And other heroes are emerging every day. Just check the media, read the newspapers, watch the news, and you'll find people from the area stepping forward during this difficult time to help their friends and neighbors. Americans are and will continue to do what we always do in times of crisis, helping out our neighbors, protecting our most valuable citizens, our most vulnerable citizens, rather, working together to defeat any enemy. And lastly, the coronavirus is an enemy just as deadly as we have ever faced. It's the real thing. It's not business as usual. That's why we've taken the extraordinary step of this meeting tonight in closing chambers down to the public and providing access through the media by television, by telephone, by streaming video, and still conducting it. But if we pull together, follow the data-driven instructions, I'll say that again, the data-driven instructions from our healthcare leaders, we will overcome the virus quickly, and we will revive and prosper. It's going to be tough. We can do it if we pull together and watch out for our friends and our neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Well said, commissioners. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Lorenzer. We are at a critical point right now, and we are, I've heard many, several of my conversations today, we're in this moment of calm before the storm. And I just, again, will thank everyone for the sacrifices they're making now, sacrifices we're going to have in front of us. And I know that we will, when we come together, we will have, we'll, there's going to be new ways that we've never done before, but I think we're inventive and creative and strong, and we will find a way to get through this. And I do have seasonal allergies, so I apologize. I, I was coughing quite a bit. I'm sure that it's seasonal allergies, because now with the melting snow, this is when it comes out for me, so I do apologize. And I just, I think folks were very eloquent on the threats in front of us and the concerns that we have. Thank you very much. I have nothing more to add. Thank you for the ability, your time and patience with me as I was running the meetings. As I said, Mayor Smith will be back on March 30th. I look forward to being a commissioner again, getting to make motions, but thank you very much for your, the time. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Just to make a point that our next meeting will be on March 30th, and it will probably be set up the same way it is today. I don't anticipate anything changing drastically in the next two weeks, so we, I'd like to ask you to plan on being in the same situation and remind the public that it will be probably that way. And if there's anything that comes out of this that we need to change or will change, we'll, we'll let you know. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add except that with regard to Commissioner Bonzella, we'll be speaking with the BLP. I'll be speaking with the Housing Commission and following up on your concerns as well. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the city remains, or remains ready to deal with the situation any way possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 7:00.